Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask Counselor Kravjak to start in a short prayer.
Oh, many thanks for the peace and the goodness you have in this country. Thank you for the rainfall of weather we had and for the wonderful plot for the farmers. We do pray for the safety of our staff as they adventure through front work. Thank you also for this council, who help us with our decision making here today. Thank you, thanks in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for that opening prayer. Looking at the agenda, is there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, members of the council, there are a couple of additions. To start with, under 9.4.5, under the CAO, Occupational Health and Safety Presentation. Under 9.6, adding festoon outlets to Hamlet Streetlights. We'd like to add to the closed session a personnel matter. And we've received information that the library delegation will not be able to attend today, so we'd like to offer that as a deletion. So 9.4.5, OHNS Presentation, 9.6, adding festoon outlets to Hamlet Streetlights, personnel added to closed session, and deletion of the library presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any other, yes, Counselor?
No. Mr. Reeve, I move the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Any discussion on the... seeing none, I need to call for the vote. Are we all in the right meeting? Carrie? Okay, I need adoption of the minutes. Regular meeting, October 12, 2022.
I move that we adopt the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves adopting the minutes of October 12, 2022, regular meeting of council as presented. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Reeve?
Seeing none, I'll call...
Mr. Reeve?
Sorry, go ahead.
Counselor Slipchak wasn't there. No, it doesn't matter, though. If you're not there, you can't approve the minutes, because there may be something that was misset or whatever, misquoted or whatever.
Sorry, I should have picked that up. Yeah, no problem. Looking for a different motion. Counselor Scarsen... or is Counselor... no, Counselor Scarsen?
I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion that council approves adoption of the minutes, October 12, 2022, regular meeting of council as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, Carrie, thank you. Also looking for a motion on committee of the whole, October 19, 2022. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves adoption of the minutes of October 19, 2022, committee of the whole meeting as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. I think I crossed out the wrong one here, but I think we'll go right into our delegation. Les? We have the Bonneville District Centennial Center here this morning. Just punch your mic, it should turn red. Good, you got her.
It's red.
You got her.
Great. Okay, so first of all, just thank you so much for being a key partner in the Centennial Center. It's a million-dollar budget item for you folks every year, and we really appreciate your support. It's been ongoing now for 15-plus years. And also, I want to add on, thanks for the $300,000 loans, we can get the Agroplex project up and going. That was much needed, and we're getting close to opening the doors on that. I presented this same budget to the town on September the 28th, so I'll just walk you through whatever you have in front of you with the 2023 budget overview. So we just had a strategic planning session on our first page there at the end of September. So what we have now is a consultant we're working with called Tim from Bloom, and he's working with us to come up with our strategic plan to be developed over the next couple of months. And so as we present this budget, we haven't included any changes to the operational budget as is. We believe we can run our budget as presented, even given any potential changes from the strategic plan. The second bullet there is COVID-19 restrictions were moved in February and March, so it's been a gradual return to what we would call normal activity levels. There are some inflationary pressures now that we hadn't expected, and some sort of volatile economic conditions that still carry on. It's affecting our customers and guests a lot. Leisure and recreation spending is discretionary, and for some people, it's becoming a bit unaffordable. So for that reason, we've been holding to the prices we have been charging for our memberships, facility rentals, users. We haven't increased any prices at all, just to keep things affordable for our community. This budget presented requests $100,000 more than previous years. For the last few years, we've been holding steady, so it's a 5% increase from previous years. Expense increases of note are in the areas of staffing and personnel costs, purchase supplies, services, insurance, and utilities. Insurance, we've looked at up to 15% increase in that cost alone. And then we've also made provisions in these budgets to repay our loan to you folks for the next five years, $65,000 a year, starting in 2023. We have significant revenue increases to offset additional expenses, and we're expecting those in ice rentals, recreational programming, memberships, drop-in facility rentals. Onto the next page, the operating budget overview, which gives you a big picture here, is our budget's projected to increase from $3.1 million to $3.8 million in 2023. It's an increase of $630,000, and that's balanced with expenditures and revenues. As the doors are open for business now, we just see things jumping back up to over $0.5 million increase. Our municipal contributions of $2 million are requested from the Town of Bonneville and MD. This is an increase of $100,000, the first increase since 2015, so it'll be $48,000 from the town and $52,000 from the MD. That's what our request is. This is based on regular unrestricted operations.
Excuse me, Les?
Yeah?
Can we ask questions as you're going?
Sure can, yeah.
Yeah, before you get too far carried away, I mean, there's a lot of information here.
Sure.
So with just what you mentioned, 2023 operating budget overflow, so overview. I understand we're 50-50 partners in this, but yet the contribution from Bonneville is 47.9, and ours is 52 from the MD. Is there reasoning for that?
I believe the reason is it's based on percentages of the populations of the town and the MD. So when they do a calculation of the percentages, there's a bit higher number of people living in the MD than there is in the Town of Bonneville, so it's about 51, 49%, somewhere. And there may be 52 and 48% differential, and that's been something they've had from the Memorandum of Understanding since 2007. They would just split it based on population numbers. So excellent question. Yeah.
Yes, to Counselor Fedeau, to the Reeve, and the rest of the council, the agreement does indicate that it's based on usage, and for the last several years, we have picked up 51 or better percentage of the operating budget. Although we're 50-50 owners of the facility, we pick up just slightly more than 50% of the operating budget.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for clarity.
Yeah, and we have really no stats on how many people, you know, from the town or MD are coming through the doors. You know, our hockey communities throughout the whole region, from rec center drop-in is more handy for local people in town, but these numbers are all over the place, and we've never been able to trace how we would ever figure out who comes through the doors and what percentage it actually is in terms of users. But we're quite sure it's about 50-50.
Definitely moving target, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You can also move your screen, too, with a clicker.
Okay, yeah, I'll let... if you guys want to click on that, I'm happy.
You can give it back to them.
Is it pretty easy to do here? What am I doing?
I don't know how to use it, so...
I'm not sure if it's turned on, even. Someone else? So I'm on the page now with the operating budget overview. Sorry to go so fast here at the start. So I'm at the third bullet now, where we're continuing to return to regular operations pre-COVID. That means we're open for business, and with the Agroplex opening up soon, that's a multipurpose facility for sports, recreation, and events, and that'll enhance opportunities for increased activity and revenue generation. So it's like a second fieldhouse to us, that Agroplex. One of the criticisms we've had over the last year since I've been here, just finished my first year, is that people have memberships, family drop-in memberships, can't really use the facility because they come into the fieldhouse, and it's busy with soccer, volleyball, other sports. So the fieldhouse being there is gonna give people who have a family membership a chance to use the facility, because the Agroplex, we've got a multipurpose floor on it. It's a multipurpose sport/dance hall floor that can be used for everything, so that's gonna be huge in terms of numbers of people coming through the door and using the facility. And it's anticipated any actions resulting from our strat plan will also prove beneficial to revenue generation, and it's felt that we're cautiously optimistic on its own merits with this budget, increasing the budget by $630,000. So that's... we're not taking a big risk. We're quite confident we can do this. I'm looking at the middle line, the blue proposed budget, is what we're looking at right now. So our revenues are, you know, $1.7 million. The town is just under $1 million for funding, the MD just over $1 million for funding, so the combined total there is $2 million, and our total revenue then is $3.8 million. Then looking at our expenses, obviously, personnel costs are always the highest at $2.4 million. Supplies and services are $1.5 million, and the rest of the... oh, sorry, building expenses are $747,000. That's a big one for us, and it's just the cost of utilities. We can't get around that. And then other areas, it totals up to $3.82 million as well. So that's our proposed budget that we would hope to balance in 2023. Onto the next page, our budget overview. The forecast then, $3.8 million, $630,000 increase, and it's still a bit lower than what we had in 2019, when it was, I think it's $258,000 lower than what we had during the last normal year of operation. People are still a bit hesitant to come in to the facility. There's still some seniors and some families that are choosing to sort of stay away. Some people got through COVID, got used to being at home. They have their own expensive gyms they built in their basements, or they got hooked on screens or other activities and haven't come back in full for us. The last couple of weeks have been pretty busy for us with the Business of the Year awards, the both galas, the Vic Ringette Gala, the CNRL Gala. Like, those numbers are getting bigger. They aren't as big as they used to be. I think we had 400 for the Victor Ringette and about 600 for CNRL. So, but the numbers are coming back up, so we're still not back to where we would be in 2019. So that's our budget overview. I'll go on to the next page here, the expenditure overview. So these are the personnel costs, $2.4 million. That includes our salaries, wages, benefits, CPP, EI, RSP, and training. It also includes a cost of wage increase of 2%. Last year, our board approved 2.5 last year, 2 this year, and 1.5 for the following year. One of the big increases here is in part-time staff from 41 to 55. That's an extra 4,500 hours that we're budgeting for 2023 with the building being busier. And the prior year that we're just finishing right now, we had 23 full-time and salary staff, and that's gonna be going to 25 now that we've lifted all the COVID restrictions. So we replaced two of the staff that were let go, and there were a few others let go during, prior to COVID, that we haven't replaced, and we don't plan on that for now. So we've got our staff up to 25 full-time. So overall, the increase will be $377,000 compared to 2021. And again, that's mostly due to having the need for all these part-time staff to run the facility day-to-day. It's an extra 14 staff. Utilities, gas and electricity only are on these, and we have, through Keith, our financial guy, he did lock in our prices for both gas and electricity, and we've been in touch with the town to take advantage of a Power Plus program potentially down the road. So right now, we're expecting electricity increase, a slight one, and that big increase would be, or the slight increase would be, in the summertime, we want to run the arena. And we'll also have some extra, which is one of the ice surfaces, which requires some energy. And also, the Agroplex will require some more energy than usual. It's been sort of set at just, you know, 10 degrees while it's been sitting empty for the last year, and up until then, the school used it full-time. So having the ice plant run year-round will increase some of those costs. And so we've done our best to, you know, keep those utility costs as close to low as possible. Kyle, our facility manager, is... he's not a tree hugger, but he certainly does his best to make sure the lights are off and the temperature's down when it needs to, and he puts it back up when we need to have it running. So our distribution charges are, we can't control. We can control what we consume, but our distribution charges, which I'm sure the MD faces, just keep on climbing, and that's a big part of our bills. Insurance, that's the $80,000 hit there. This was moved over to the RMA three years ago, as we've budgeted for a 15% rate increase. What that comes out to in 2023, you don't know, but that's our budget for now. So we kind of budgeted high, hoping we're over rather than under. And then building and equipment maintenance and replacement costs are $200,000. So that includes all the repairs that our staff do in-house. And then we also contracted out two different trade companies, some of the repair and maintenance, including their parts and labor. And then we have service agreements with the ice plant and different technical parts of our program that we have, and then we need to purchase and replace some equipment. So our aim's to minimize unexpected issues and failures with building and equipment maintenance. Onto our next one, the technology costs, $55,000. They're marginal from year to year on a sort of slight increase throughout each year. Purchase supplies and services, this is the $1.5 million. This is mostly due to what we're having to pay at the cafe, and also for alcohol when we're buying those supplies and services. Those have come up huge and are still climbing as they go, as are janitorial supplies and things like paper and plastic products. So these items are increasing mostly because of the volume, not so much the difference in price. So the increase here is 46% compared to the 2022 budget. We're just gonna go through a ton more food as we go, compared to the low numbers we had during COVID. General expenses, we're entering our final year with Matrix Group as our auditors, a reduction in value for in-kind media advertising, and the community partnership increases. So we're... so we're getting tons of requests every day for a freebie at the C2, or what can you do for us? Can you give us a facility cut? Can you help us out with this price? Can you lower the price? It's daily, and since I've been there, even in the last year, it's increased exponentially. People just say, "Oh, can you please give us a better price?" "Can you give us a freebie? Can you give us a donation?" And they're coming fast and furious, and we're holding, you know, steady to what we can do that's in-kind, which would be a golf simulator membership, some gym passes, things we can afford to do in-house, but we aren't able to write checks and sponsor anybody. We're just trying to do things that we can afford to do out of our normal operations and not adding expenses. What else have I got here? Finance expenses, $77,000, and that includes $65,000 to repay yourselves at the MD here for the Agroplex renovation project. That's why it's jumped up so much from $12,000 to $77,000.
Mr. Reeve, I have a question.
Yeah?
The loan of $65,000...
Yeah?
From the $200,000 loan, right?
It's a $300,000 loan, and so the $65,000 is our five years, we'll pay the same amount every year.
But technically, since we're paying 52%, we're only getting 48% of that back, right?
Never thought about that.
Because it's in the budget.
Right. Sure. Okay, I'll talk with Keith, and we'll think, come up with how we can address that for sure. Excellent question. Okay. Onto revenue overview. Our tenant agreements are at $150,000. It's consistent income with minimal overheads. We had a couple of people apply just recently to become tenants, and we held off on that based on a strategic plan and also based on what's normal for a multipurpose facility. Is it open for a bunch of small businesses to come in there and run it, or is it supposedly for community service? So we had that discussion, and we're trying to stay to what's best for community service and not get into the business market of competing with other rental places in the community. We're quite full. As we speak right now, I think we've got two office spaces that are open. We have some renewals coming up with Happy House Daycare and FASD. That's worth about $80,000 a year, and we've got a couple of block office spaces available upstairs.
Les, just a quick question in regards to that. So you guys are very competitive to what the town charges as well, then, for your tenants?
Yeah, we're competitive, and we don't want to be underscoring anybody. So one tenant we looked at, we realized we were probably underpriced, and we held off on that because we want to make sure that, you know, they could find something in town that was comparable or... Yeah, we didn't want to be... we don't think... we know that the MD people and the town people don't want to be subsidizing a business to operate in our facility. That was the bottom line.
Right, yeah, but your costs on the rental are all-inclusive as well, right?
They are, yeah. They use our washrooms, they do their own cleaning, but we do all the heat, power, and then they rent from us access to technology.
So that is a pretty good deal.
It's a very good deal for them, yeah, yeah. The daycare has a super deal with this, and that was just to fill a huge vacancy at the time of space. We do have access to our catering kitchen, the fieldhouse, the C2 kids. Like, they've got a very good deal there, but that was a deal that was signed before I got there. But again, they are paying a lot of bills to keep the facility running, so it's working for them. It's working for us right now. They've been a very good tenant, no complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Sponsorship agreements, we have long-term ones for the VIP suite, the Senovus, the Fieldhouse, and we've got two soon to be announced for the Agroplex and for the Wellness Fitness Centers. We've got two of those that we'll be making public here in the next few weeks, and those will bring in a lot more money as well. We've still got a potential other sponsor for the outdoor rink, so we might have a third big sponsor on with us right away. It'll be much like we had with the Graham Fieldhouse a few, a couple of months ago when they signed on to keep the Fieldhouse going. The Pepsi sponsorship, we've renewed it. They've been good to us with a decent discount on rebates and purchased products, and we're letting the Molson sponsorship expire in December, so they can't be exclusive to the C2. We want to support Journey North, Beaver River, Cold Lake Brewing Company, the Lakeland Brewing Company, so we've opened up that, so we won't be renewing the Molson sponsorship. There was no benefit to us, and it really held back on what we could do to support local beverage suppliers. Our advertising agreements are set at $92,000, and that's all the advertising. We've got a newer fellow on staff called Kevin Roth, and he's been doing a really good job out in the community, generating revenue dollars for us in advertising revenue. So that's looking pretty healthy for us next year. One of those includes the RJ Arena. We've got a new digital scoreboard in there with advertising opportunities as well. So those are bringing in revenue that we haven't had in the past, as well as Zamboni. Grants, we're applying for whatever we can. We've still got right now an application in for a CFEP grant, Community Facility Enhancement Project, and if we're able to access that grant, if it comes through to us in November... Sorry, in December or January, you might be repaid a lot sooner on the $300,000 loan, so we'll see how that goes with CFEP. Then we've got our average grants, like the Canada Summer Jobs, and then training reimbursement grants through the Canada Alberta Job Grant. That's to train all of our operators in all the safety and ice-making and all the things that go on with the ice plant. Memberships, we've got a revenue goal of $225,000. That includes one-month passes. The trend is people did invest in their own home gyms. A lot of them have been using them. A lot of them come there just for the fellowship of being in the gym with other people, so even those people are starting to trickle back in just for the social contact they would have rather than being at home in front of their television. And it's showing signs of return to the previous levels. Fitness is still a huge priority for people. Then the drop-in recreation is still significant. It's $100,000 plus, and that's individuals. People who still just drop in on day-to-day for the gym or rec activities, shinny, public skating, the golf simulator, the climbing wall, the indoor playground, the track. So it's better than anticipated. We didn't expect to see that many individuals come back. And then the Agroplex project will, again, give us even more opportunities for sports and activities and programs. Recreation and events programming, this includes all of the stuff that Vicki and her staff do through the gym, day camps, kid nights out, bounce houses, Nerf guns, leagues and tournaments, summer camps. We're good this past summer. There's a small number of smaller events planned, and we're still considering the risk when evaluating opportunities. We're still looking at what's the risk. We're not out to have big concerts that we're gonna risk on and lose our shirt on. We've been watching the Bowl Center in Lacklubish, the Energy Center in Cold Lake, the Athabasca Multiplex, and everybody's still not afraid to gamble on a big, big concert. Claudia is doing phenomenal work with events, hosting other events that are good, like these galas and oodles of birthday parties and special family events. So she's running around all the time like Forrest Gump, getting these events in there. And again, we've held those prices the same as well. We aren't jumping up the price on those events just so the community can afford to use it as a family or recreation or community organization center. Ice rentals are huge. You see, they're $360,000, and that's minor hockey, the Pontiacs, figure skating, school programs, other ice bookings. And we have a lot of people who come in and just book the ice for personal use or for training other people, and that, again, also came out throughout the summer. Last time, we had a bit of a blip because we'd planned to take all the ice out for hosting the Alberta Provincial Lacrosse Tournament. That got canceled with a short notice. We'd already planned to take the ice out. Had we known that we'd had that ice throughout the whole summer, we could have scheduled regular, like the Justin Fontaine Hockey Camps or other hockey camps, the Lakeland Lightning, the Panthers, Bonneville Minor Hockey, girls' hockey. We could have had more stuff scheduled. We knew we'd be taking it out for three weeks. That kind of caught us off guard, but we're quite confident that even though with the increased utility costs, that with a full year of summer ice, we can do well with scheduling that to make some good revenue from it. Sports rentals is big, $50,000. Soccer is one of our biggest ones, in the Fieldhouse. There's also lacrosse, baseball, volleyball, the Yellow Jackets, Track and Field Club, other sport bookings. So again, we might have some additional capacity. We do have additional capacity to use the Agroplex for those sports groups, still leaving some time for drop-in family recreation and kids and seniors. The customer facility bookings were really hit hard by COVID, and it's looking like it's getting back to normal. And again, with Agroplex, we can do weddings, conferences, small groups. It's a good facility. It's about 2/3 the size of the Fieldhouse, or maybe half a size, depends how you set it up, but it's gonna give us a good backup to move events back and forth between the Fieldhouse and the Agroplex. So rather than tie up the whole Fieldhouse for a wedding, we can put that over in the Agroplex and leave the sports in the Fieldhouse. If it's a big sport event, leave that there and put a small event over in the Agroplex. and put a small event over in the Agriplex. And external equipment rentals are just people that are booking tables and chairs. It's an ongoing thing. When you drop by the seat, there's always somebody unloading, loading up chairs and tables to book equipment. The cafe, we're looking at a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars of revenue. COVID knocked us right down. Our ongoing challenge, the second bullet there, is to balance customer service with staffing costs, especially during the weekday hours and also during the summer months. So, and it's really based on the facility, number of people in the facility. So the more people, the rest of our staff can get into that building, the busier the cafe is. Our revenues, our margins are negative in some areas because supplier costs are getting higher and higher. We've been working with them. We're trying to keep those under control. So we've completed a menu for this upcoming year that we're working on right now, and it's got a slight increase in prices to accommodate those food prices. But it's a real balancing act on the cafe. The vending machines is consistent. It's thirty thousand bucks a year, provides snacks and beverages when the cafe is closed. We just bought a new little automated coffee machine. People can get a hot coffee now when the cafe is closed. So the vending machines are great for us, not much staffing required other than filling them up and restocking them all the time. This year, we're going to be adding a card payment where instead of having cash, you can go and just tap your card. And that'll increase revenues a lot. That's what we've learned from other centers. Catering, we've scaled back largely with the large functions. We aren't doing any large function catering at the C2. Just there's too many staff. Before I got there, there was a head of catering and too many staff on-site who are only used for one or two events a month. So we've just gone to the local catering companies. When someone wants something catered, Claudia will just say, here's your four or five options in the community. Go for it. And then people pick their own caters, and it's been working really well for us. So it's not worth us risking investing back into a big catering staff. And we have good partnerships now with the rest of the companies. We moved it around, so they're all getting fair treatment. We are doing some small snack and lunch options that the cafe does for groups that want to have that or beverages. Or if they have a small conference or meeting, we still do those types of catering. And then the box lunch program's been working for more and more groups. Bar sales, a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. That includes the Pontiacs, special events, customer events. High margins and relatively low staffing costs, and it certainly ties into attracting customers to our facility. They want to have a bar service at their events, and so it certainly is a draw that brings them in. And we've seen a huge increase just in the last month in that. We don't want to be running the C2 based on generating a ton of money off booze. We're trying to promote healthy living, trying to promote, you know, family. We're trying to promote activity, so we're not promoting shoving booze down people's throats and making money off that. It's not a focus of ours at all. It is a byproduct of what we have offered, and it's been pretty reasonable. We haven't had a lot of big drunk fests or alcohol, you know, bashes happening at the C2, so it's been very, I guess, well-respected by the community. Finally, I've got the capital budget there, and we're requesting the same as previous years. We're pretty excited because for the last couple of years, since I've been there, last year and a half, we've been just taking money out of operating to do the capital repairs because we put that money towards the Agriplex renovation project and put in a new roof on the Agriplex a year ago. So now we'll have two-hundred-thousand dollars to work with this upcoming year for capital costs. So we just sort of squeezed it out of our operating budget. So you'll see there we've got four estimated cost projects that we're looking at. A hundred thousand dollars for the ice plant condenser replacement, fourteen thousand dollars for a bike and a weight room machine replacement, six thousand for a large bounce house, those big inflatable bounce houses, and then eighty thousand for parking lot resurfacing. And we'll talk to the M.D. here in the winter if we can work with you folks somehow on the parking paving, working with some of your partners if we can keep those costs. So whatever we don't spend on the top three items will go to the parking lot resurfacing because it's getting rough in some spots. As you drive in, it's clunk, 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 clunk. So that's our capital budget. So that's our request for the year. I guess as a new GM, you know, I'm not sheepish, but I come in and they say, oh, can we get a, you know, a five percent increase? But since we haven't had an increase in the last seven years, we just feel we need to do something. We're being very frugal. I can tell you right now, our staff is not, doesn't have a wish list. They don't have, you know, they don't throw money around like drunk sailors. We're running things as a pretty tight ship. Myself, I'm frugal. The staff are frugal. I've got no high spenders or people there wasting money. It's a great team to work with. They're a hard-working staff. They're dedicated, and I'm committed to, you know, supporting them through this budget presentation, and that's where we're at for now. So that's my presentation. Sorry for the details. It's a million dollars. I wanted you to have an idea of some of the details.
Very well done. Any questions? I don't have a really question about this, but just tell us about the ice-making machine that we have there now.
The Real Ice Machine?
Yeah.
Okay, so we invested in a program called Real Ice. It was a thirty-five-thousand-dollar investment, and it's to use cold water instead of hot water to flood the ice. So, and we got a twenty-thousand-dollar grant from M.M.A.C.C., Municipal Action for Climate Change. So we put it in in the summer. We worked awfully hard. Darcy was there for some of those, some of those early, you know, practices. We worked off there to make it work, and it wasn't working for two reasons. One of them was it was really hot in July and August when we were trying to make it work. But the second reason we finally figured out is we didn't have the water pressure necessary to force the water through the Real Ice device. It is like a little, small tornado device. It needs high pressure using centrifugal force to spin out the microbubbles. So the reason we use hot water, we use really hot water to flood the ice. The heat in the water takes out all the bubbles, and then you've got good water to make ice with. So we've been using that for the last, you know, fifteen years. The Real Ice project was to save us a ton of utility costs by using cold water. What we found out after a month of failed ice was that we were basically being like a farmer or a town person out just putting cold water across the ice, you know, with the air bubbles and galore, and it just was not working. So now we're waiting for Trademark. They've ordered a special booster pump, which will boost the pressure of that up to what we needed, which is always over fifty P.S.I. So we were below fifty P.S.I. quite a few times. Our town water supply comes from the west end of town. By the time it gets to the C2, there's times when it's well below forty, sometimes thirty. So we weren't putting microbubbled ice, water on the ice. The ice we put on was full of microbubbles and just wasn't working at all. And it was a bit dangerous for the lightning camp, for some of the early Pontiac skates, so we reverted back to the hot water. And as soon as we get this, then we'll go back to the Real Ice. The biggest skeptic of it was Slave Lake. They've had a guy make ice there for thirty-some years. We phoned him. He walked through it. We thought, well, we're doing all the stuff you're doing. Why is it not working? He's loving it. And we said, well, then why is it working for you and not for us? And finally, the guy from Sweden, who invented the system, identified it's your water pressure. So, and we had thought, when we looked at our water pressure, and it wasn't an issue for us in the past, how much water pressure we had for Real Ice, so it wasn't a big deal. You could put on low water, high water pressure. Whether it's hot or not, it would have made a difference. But this thing depends on that, on that high water pressure. As soon as that's in, we'll go back to Real Ice, and it'll save us a ton. We got two huge boilers that we use to fill the Zambonis all the time, and we're turning one of those off as soon as we're back to the Real Ice project. So that'll be as soon as Trademark gets that in.
Okay, right on. Any other questions on his presentation? Well, thank you for coming in and very well done.
Good, good. Okay, well, thank you again for all your support for the C2.
Okay, have a great day. Just looking for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, accept as information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the presentation by the Bonneville District Centennial Center as information, and furthermore directs administration to bring back additional information regarding their request for funding, support to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Okay, we're on to seven, Development Application, seven point one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is an update for Development Application two thousand twenty-two dash D dash one six six. This application was tabled at the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two council meeting to provide time for the applicant to submit a progressive reclamation plan for the pit and to provide additional time for affected landowners to submit letters of concern. The applicant has provided correspondence on October fifth, two thousand twenty-two, stating the withdrawal of the Class Two gravel pit application to pursue a Class One gravel pit application through the provincial authority as per Appendix F. Recommendation for council is that council accepts the update of Development Permit Application two thousand twenty-two dash D dash one six six, Natural Resources Extraction and Processing Facility Use for a Class Two gravel pit within northeast thirty-six sixty-five west of the fourth as information.
Thank you. Looking for a motion. Yes, Counselor Crick.
So basically, they're withdrawing the application for the gravel pit so they can apply for, to the province for a Class One gravel pit. That's correct, right?
Yeah, through the REVE to Counselor Crick. That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much then for the report and I'll move that we accepted as information.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts the update from Development Permit Application number two zero two two D one six six, Natural Resource Extraction and Proceeding Facilities Use for Class Two Gravel Pit Within Northeast, sorry, Northeast thirty-six sixty-five west of the fourth M as information. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, Mr. Reed, so just to be clear, so they're, we're applying for a Class One now pit, which is bigger.
That is correct.
And so where does that leave us, though? Do, is this, does it come back to us and then we look at the complaints and stuff and concerns from folks again?
So I have touched base with Alberta Environment and Parks, who is the approving body of this Class One pit, and it would actually come back to council to review the land use and adjacent concerns as that is not something that they address.
So, sorry, do they approve it, though, and then we, do we have any recourse at all, though?
So they can provide an authorization for the applicant to proceed with this. The applicant still requires a development permit, and the only items that we can address are items that are not addressed in their approval. They will be looking at regulatory things, environmental impacts, and how the pit is operated. What they are not looking at is if they, if we have a road use agreement for the Township Road six thirty and if any of the adjacent landowners have any concerns. So those are things that we can address.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. I guess we're on to eight, but I don't think we have anything under eight. Nine, Planning and Community Services, nine point two.
Mr. Reed?
Sorry, nine point two one.
Yeah, I request, please, that when we complete nine point two point three for first community hall, if it, please, council, would we be able to move in camera to deal with the community agreements question? I have two members of staff who are here to present that, who are also trying to get out for a conference today.
Absolutely, whenever it's, yeah.
The other in-camera item could stay to the end of the council, but if we could deal with that one so they can get on the road.
After nine point two?
After nine point two point three, if we could just jump to
Yep.
twelve point one.
Okay, thank you. So right after nine point two, okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. So I have Bylaw Number eighteen ten, which is the roadway licensing bylaw for first reading. Administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw eighteen ten, authorizing the M.D. of Bonneville to enter into an agreement to license the road allowance west of the southwest of nineteen sixty-five of one, west of the fourth meridian, in accordance with Policy Number three A dash zero one eight, as shown on the map on Appendix A. The applicant has applied to license the road allowance in order to enter into an encroachment agreement with the municipality for the continued use of an existing cabin that was built in nineteen thirty-five, as shown on Appendix B. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation, and there was no concerns. So administration is recommending that council give first reading to Bylaw Number eighteen ten, and furthermore, is recommending that council set the date for the public hearing to November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Yes, Counselor.
Yeah, just, I had a question on what was the implications if we did nothing?
Well, the cabin has been there since nineteen twenty, or nineteen thirty-five, so we haven't done anything with it as of to date. So they could still apply for an encroachment agreement without licensing that road allowance as well.
And are they applying for an encroachment agreement because you've noticed that or something?
Yes, so it's, this is the property that was brought to council, I believe, a month ago that is going to be converting into just a campground. So it does have some remaining cabins that are staying there just to stay out their life, but then won't be rebuilt. So it's just to kind of bring it into a little more conformance at this time.
Thank you.
Yes, Deputy Reed, Fedev.
Good morning. So you're looking at the map. It doesn't just appear to be just a cabin that's encroaching, but a lot of other pieces of equipment as well.
Yeah, they, those could be RVs or something at the time that this aerial was taken. It's not an actual building. The only building is that bit that is outlined in yellow.
Kate.
Looks like two boats and our big RV almost. Any other questions? Okay, I'm just looking for a motion.
Yes, I'll move option one, that we give it first reading.
Kate, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that Bylaw Number eighteen ten be a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, roadway license be given, first reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, also looking for another motion for public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Reed, I'll make that second motion for a public hearing.
Kate, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at ten a.m. as a date and time for the Bylaw Number eighteen ten public hearing. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, gentlemen, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Have a great day. Going on to nine point two point two, Canusa Ridge.
Hello, Mr. Reed and Council.
Good morning.
We'll be having Mr. Philip Krantton, our manager of Canusa Ridge, present this next article.
Kate.
Morning, Reed, Council. So on October the eighth, twenty twenty-two, Canusa Ridge operations, Mason's Building was broken into and one of our ATVs was stolen. The unit was approved by council for replacement through the approved twenty twenty-two Equipment Replacement Reserve Program. I have note the unit having been stolen there, there is no option for trading or auction of this old unit. However, as it was insured, a claim has been submitted, and through the timing of the claim to be processed is unknown. The subsequent ordering and delivery will not align with our current immediate need for the hill operations as we prepare for winter service. Administration is requesting that council approve the purchase of the replacement of the ATV to ensure there is no minimal to no negative impacts felt in Canusa Ridge regular operations for the winter season. regular operations for the winter season. From the RFT, you can see the quotes that have come through for us, and availability. The cost and sourcing of funding for this is going to come from the Equipment Replacement Reserve Program. Our recommendation from administration is that council approve the purchase of the Yamaha All Train ATV vehicle from Precision Power Products for the amount you can see stated, and it will be funded from capital budget, Equipment Replacement Reserve Program. Any questions?
Yeah, Councilor Crick?
Yeah, so with, it was the unit that was stolen that was scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-two anyway, is that what you said? Okay.
Through the reef, yes.
Okay. And there's no really clarification as to what this unit is, I was just curious, is it, is it like a track unit or a quad or?
Quad unit.
Just with wheels?
Some of those, yeah.
Okay.
Four by four quad.
Okay.
Mr. Reeve, just had a question about, I'm in favor of doing this, I'm just curious, is it actually, says delivery aga or October, is it actually on their lot now? This is October, so.
As, as it stands, it's due to be coming in, yes, that's correct.
It's, should be coming in?
Yes.
I'm just concerned because it is the end of October.
Yeah, through the reef, discussion with the supplier, they said it would be here for October. We haven't touched base with them this week, but they said it would be here for this month, so.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
And through the reef, Councilor Crick, just for clarity, the, the current, the unit that was stolen was scheduled to be replaced, it was in the capital equipment replacement program for replacement for the twenty twenty-three year, for next year?
Okay.
So.
Oh, it was for this year, okay, it was for this year, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, Deputy Reeve and then Councilor Chris, or the other way around, don't matter. Councilor Crick and then Deputy Reeve.
I was just gonna ask, so it's for a quad essentially, if you've, maybe we don't ever do that, I don't know, but a used quad that's like one or two years old, just, I know I'm looking for myself for a used quad, and you can get a used Honda four by four, five hundred cc kind of quad for a pretty nice one around ten thousand dollars, and I don't know if that's an option for us or not, but, just to, just to save a little bit of money, right, but.
Through the reef, to Councilor Crick and actually all of council, it's not the MD's position to buy used equipment. Unfortunately, the problem with used equipment is how do we tender it through a procurement process that's fair to everybody? So when we go out to buy a piece of equipment, we, we spec out what we need for a piece of equipment, then the vendors have an opportunity to bid on, on a unit that has the same specifications. So when it comes to used equipment, we would be essentially sole sourcing pieces of equipment that are, you know, of significant value greater than ten thousand dollars. You know, we're talking about a quad in this case, I would say the same thing, then why don't we go, you know, buy used graders and used tractors and other things as well? And for the exact same reason, we have warranty program when we buy something new, and we tend to keep them for a long time. So, for the big issue, though, is, is how do we procure a used unit in a, in a fair way? That's always, that's always a question.
Deputy Reeve, then.
Thanks, just, just more of a technical question in regards to, to the insurance end of it, was that, is that replacement value, or how was, how was that word? I know I'm kind of digging into that, but I mean, it's just how, you know, because I mean theft is becoming a little more, you know, more prevalent out there, and I'm just wondering if, if we're really, I'm sure we are, but.
And through the reef, Deputy Reeve Fadav, I believe our insurance is a five thousand dollar deductible, so we would probably see an insurance proceed of whatever the estimated value of that piece of equipment was with the deduction of the five thousand dollars. It won't be significant in any, in any event.
Thank you.
Counselors Carson?
Yeah, I just, I just have a question after the CEO brought that up, is, you know, I have no issue buying this, a new quad, but how do we end up selling equipment to other municipalities and, like, do they have different policies than we do, or, because I think that there is value in buying used for some units, I don't know about this one in particular, but, I mean, we sell fire trucks and graders to other municipalities all the time, right, so.
And through the reef, to Counselors Carson, I don't believe we've ever sold heavy equipment to other municipalities, I know we've done some, some vehicles. An intermunicipal deal would be certainly different if somebody had a quad that they were looking to sell, I know that we did sell one of the peace officer vehicles to another municipality at some point in last year. Intermunicipal would be certainly a different deal, and then procurement rules are not quite as sticky, because we're not buying from a, from a for-profit vendor, we're doing basically an intermunicipal exchange. That would be certainly something we would entertain here, if somebody had something we needed, they had a, you know, a lightly-used, heavy piece of equipment, and we could get it at what we thought was a good value, we would certainly recommend that. But most of the time, these, these go out to tender, and even to go out, we take, we would be taking certain risks by going to an auction, to, for example, Ritchie Brothers to buy a grader, we could probably save a lot of money, but we could also end up with something that's inheriting somebody else's problem.
Going back to Ritchie's next month.
Yeah, going back to Ritchie's, yeah. I do think, though, however, we do watch, and I certainly, I'm on the RMA website once a week for equipment that does come up, and if there's anything that might be of value to the MD from another municipality, and again, probably the common one would be peace officer vehicles, but these kind of piece of equipment don't come up very often for an intermunicipal deal. I think last year, we sold one peace officer vehicle and several shotguns to other municipalities.
Okay, Counselor Sutcliffe, then Counselor Swagert?
Yeah, my question is, like you're saying, you need to have this here because you want snow start, begin in November, the snow making, but you didn't check, now you're not certain that when this lower price Yamaha is going to be in, and what if it was delayed, if we go forward with the Yamaha a little bit, but it doesn't come in, we tie your hands in and reduce the option of maybe going with the one that's on the lot, do we?
Through the reef, they assured us that, that it would be here for October, the date, not, not sure on that, but, but there's always the unknown what delays in shipments and stuff, but then that's all we can really go on at this point, but we're counting on it being here, though.
Yeah, it was the same, basically the same comment, I, because you're going to be back to us here in, in a couple of weeks saying you need more money for the other one because it's on the lot, you know, it's just that, these things aren't, aren't sitting around on lots, so I think you maybe should have gone for the one that's available if you needed it, but I'll make the motion to go with option one, will we approve your purchase? Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
There's still five days left in October.
That's right. Thanks for bringing that up, Counselor, great, yeah. So moved by Counselor Swagert on behalf of council, that council approves the purchase of Yamaha all train vehicle ATV from Precision Power Products in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred ninety forty-eight cents to be funded from the Equipment Replacement Reserve. Any other discussion? I just had one question, I guess, what, what kind of, is that like a seven hundred or eight hundred for sixteen thousand, what, like, what kind of machine is that?
It's spec'd out to, to what the, the hill needs, so.
So you don't know if it's a six hundred?
Exact specs on it, I just know that they spec'd it similar to, to what was existing.
What was the one that was stolen, then?
Uh, it was, I guess, a Yamaha as well.
You don't know, have no size?
Not sure on that.
I'm just wondering, like, man, that seems like a lot all of a sudden for a quad.
You haven't gone quad shopping in a while, then.
Yeah, well, yeah, obviously. All right, thank you, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie. Thank you, on to nine point two point three?
Kate, thank you, Mr. Reeve and council.
Yes.
So this is the Riverhurst Community Hall grant request. So the Riverhurst Community Hall applied for an MD Community Action Grant, requesting the MD provide through the major capital projects level of this grant, funding assistance for their now awarded CFIP, the Community Facilities Enhancement Program, grant application to move and replace their playground. The Hall submitted their request to the MD using an old Community Action Grant application form prior to March fifteenth of this year. A request was then made to have the new application completed and to resubmit their request. However, this request was not received by the Hall, and it wasn't until a follow-up email was sent in October of two thousand twenty-two that this was discovered. We're unsure what happened, if it was lost in spam or, or where the disconnect was, but they did reach out and were asking, so that's why this is brought forward. So the Hall has completed the, the new application form, and it does meet the requirements as set out in three C zero twelve Community Action Grant Policy. The Riverhurst Community Hall are requesting funding in the amount of forty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents towards a total project cost of one hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars. The additional funding will be from the following areas. They were awarded thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-six through the CFIP grant, four thousand four hundred and ninety-two will be through the Hall's general operating, six thousand nine hundred and forty is through donations and in-kind labor, and the remaining nineteen thousand four hundred and three dollars will be through additional fundraising, and as a last resort, they will potentially use their reserves to cover that. Of note, just so council's aware, the MD has assisted the Riverhurst Community Hall prior, with prior CFIP grant applications and projects. In two thousand nineteen, we assisted with forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars towards an insulation and LED lighting upgrade project, and in two thousand fourteen, we provided a letter of support. The Riverhurst Community Hall is also an approved association eligible for community operating grant funding, and was approved for this funding for two thousand twenty-two, for twenty-five thousand dollars. Attached is their letter of request and application, as well as the community grant policy. This does meet the strategic plan goal, number three, in promoting community development. The sources of funding, the forty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents would be funded through the two thousand twenty-two operating budget for the MD Community Action Grant Program. The current balance remaining is approximately one hundred and two thousand four hundred and four dollars for this year. Administration is recommending that council approves the Riverhurst Community Hall Community Action Grant Application and request funding in the amount of forty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, twenty cents to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Swagert?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make that motion that we approve their ask.
Kate, thank, thank you, Counselor Swagert, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the Riverhurst Community Hall Community Action Grant Application and requested funding in the amount of forty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven twenty to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Any discussion on this motion? Gentlemen, yes, Counselor?
Yeah, I'm just curious, too, why does it have to come out of the operating budget, though? Isn't there a separate budget for this, like, these kind of requests?
Yes, through the reef, this will come out of the Community Action Grant Budget, it's just the operating budget in general.
Okay.
So, yeah, it will come out of there, as referenced there with the one hundred and two thousand remaining, so.
Yeah, you mentioned that there's one hundred and two remaining in that, where we're pulling this money from, right?
Yes.
Correct. Any other discussion?
So does it need to be, does the motion need to be, say that, or is it just out of the operating? I don't know, I'm just curious.
Yeah, good question.
Through the reef, Counselors Carson, it certainly could be, however, all of the community grant budgeting are all done through the operating budget, so it's just a sub-line, it's just a line item in an operating budget, and that particular line item still has one hundred and two thousand dollars remaining, so.
Yeah.
So I, I think either one, you certainly could make and be very specific, the Community Action Grant operating budget or just the operating budget, I think either one works. Yeah.
Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav?
So, so there's one hundred and two that's in there now, then, then we're going to minus the, the roughly forty-six thousand from there, and then we're looking at only at that fifty-some thousand left for other communities that need to take advantage of that, right?
Yes, through the reef, based on looking back at historical, that's, that's more than enough to cover out the, the remaining November, December applications.
Because they only have two months left, right?
And, and also further the moderate and, and major capital requests, there's timeframes on them, so we wouldn't be seeing any more of these.
It's unlikely that we'll have any more, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's Carrie. Need a motion to go in camera now? Yes, Counselor Craveyak? Makes a motion go in camera?
Go in camera, thank you.
Call for the vote? Okay, we're back, welcome back, I guess we're going to nine point three one, is that correct? Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. Today, Corporate Services brings to you a request for tax cancellation on roll number sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero two and sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero six. Administration received a request from Bonneville Regional Fire Authority, VRFA, formally requesting an extension from taxes for the next three years on the land and buildings generally referred to as the Capella Building. The request is for the following properties, roll sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero two, plan one six two two nine one three, lot one, lot one, and roll sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero six, plan four six two one nine, or two nine one three, my apologies for the six, leaving that, to that time number. As Assessment Services reviewed the request and concludes that, in accordance with section three six two one NIII, the Municipal Government Act, and the Community Organization Property Tax Exemption Regulation, the property would be exempt from taxation. This would result in VFRA receiving a property assessment tax notice, defining the property assessment for these properties and a zero tax levy. The reference is Municipal Government Act, section three sixty-two, and that's exemptions for churches, for governments, churches and other bodies, and the Community Organization Property Tax Exemption Regulation, two eighty-one, nineteen ninety-eight. Administration recommends that council accepts the request for tax cancellation, roll number sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero two and sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero six, report as information. Council options, the council accepts the request for tax cancellation, roll number sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero two and sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero six, report as information. Or two, the council directs administration to bring back additional information regarding tax cancellation request for roll numbers sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero two and sixty-one oh six ten one zero zero six to a future meeting of council as instructed.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Craveyak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to approve option one.
Thank you. So, thank you, Counselor Craveyak, for making the motion on behalf of council, that council accepts the request for tax cancellation, roll number six one zero six one zero one zero zero two and six one zero six Hey, Steph, Stephanie, I gave my sheet that I write on everything with that, with the stuff. Did you just discard all that stuff? Okay. She all got shredded? Okay, very good. No problem. Hey, welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Reeve Kelniski. I'm getting everybody's last.
Oh, it's okay. You did well on that one.
So, the purpose of this report is to present deliberation dates for council's consideration. According to the Municipal Government Act, council is required to approve a three-year operating budget and a five-year capital plan for each fiscal year and by December 31st of each fiscal year. And so, the purpose of this report is to recommend dates for council to establish those budget deliberations. And the recommendation is that council approve November 15th, 16th, and 17th as budget deliberation dates, and you will notice that November 16th was a regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting, and so, we were, we would ask that council would reschedule that November 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting to Tuesday, November 15th, to commence at 9:00 a.m. in the council chambers, and furthermore, that council directs administration to schedule three full days for the November Committee of the Whole Meeting for, to accommodate 2023 budget deliberations to be held on November 15th, 16th, and 17th, 2022, as required in the council chambers. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
If we're taking the 15th, 16th, and 17th, I just, it says we're rescheduling November 16th and replacing it to November 15th?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Through consultation, we had originally suggested 16th, 17th, and 18th as dates, and council suggested that the 15th, 16th, and 17th would be more appropriate.
It's just to schedule the meeting on the 15th and then recess it for the next two days.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and have the committee of the whole for budget deliberations on the 15th, 16th, and 17th of November.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council reschedules the November 16th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Tuesday, November 15th, 2022, to commence at 9:00 a.m. in council chambers, and furthermore, that council directs administration to schedule three full days for November Committee of the Whole Meeting for, to accommodate 2023 budget deliberations to be held on November 15th, 16th, and 17th, 2022, as required in council chambers.
Happy to answer any questions you may have.
If we're taking the 15th, 16th, and 17th, I just, it says we're rescheduling November 16th and replacing it to November 15th?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Through consultation, we had originally suggested 16th, 17th, and 18th as dates, and council suggested that the 15th, 16th, and 17th would be more appropriate.
It's just to schedule the meeting on the 15th and then recess it for the next two days.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and have the committee of the whole for budget deliberations on the 15th, 16th, and 17th of November.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council reschedules the November 16th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Tuesday, November 15th, 2022, to commence at 9:00 a.m. in council chambers, and furthermore, that council directs administration to schedule three full days for November Committee of the Whole Meeting to accommodate 2023 budget deliberations to be held on November 15th, 16th, and 17th, 2022, as required in council chambers. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I just.
Yes, go ahead.
Won't be able to make it on the 17th, that's all. Thank you. But it will probably be done like last year, two days. We were done, so.
Yeah, we'll probably be making all the decisions from your word on that day anyway, so.
I'll represent you, Mike, don't worry.
Yeah. All right, any, any other discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Just like one counselor said, you're one seventh of the vote.
Look how amazing she is. Thank you. Oh, she got me a brand new one. Wow. Hey, yeah, there you go. She stapled them all upside down. All right, that's carried. Thank you. 9.4.1. Good afternoon.
I'm here to present the third quarter report for marketing and communications. Just generally, we, from July to September, we worked on redesigning and laying out the council strategic plan. We began the redesign of the MD and Kennedy Ridge websites. We participated in Open Farm Days, which we were the lead marketing team for. This year, we saw about 750 visitors to that event, despite the fact there was two music festivals and the Glendon Demolition Derby that weekend. We did rather well bringing people from outside of the area. We organized photo and video shoots with our media company, Seekers Media, to prevent, to create new content for the coming year. Part of that is, part of that project will also include some media training for over 50 tourism operators that are a part of our collaboration or Take It To The Lake collaboration with the County of Athabasca, Town of Vermillion, Lake Levis County, and ourselves, and we received a $40,000 grant from Travel Alberta and a $170,000 grant from the Tourism Relief Fund to help cover the cost of that project. And we attended and reported on the AIG Service Board Rule Beautification Tour, which was a great way to showcase our area. We are part of Go East of Edmonton, and this year was the 25th Annual Guide. They saw a guide in the second year of the Road Trip Adventure Game. There was nearly 1,000 people that signed up for the Road Trip Adventure Game, which had people going through the northeast area, collecting stickers and stamps from businesses to show that they had been there. In our area, we had one set up at the Bonneville Museum, the Ardmore Golf Course, and the Cold Lake Marina. The Go East website also saw major growth this year with a 25% overall increase, and 60,000 copies of the guide were distributed. Go East, Go East marketing initiatives continue to have a positive impact on our region, and we're hoping to continue that partnership in the future. We also saw quite the growth of visitors to the Kennedy Ridge website this year, mostly because it was open this summer, so we, we saw some good feedback on that. The rest of the details of our three months are in my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Right, any questions or someone wants to make a motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav?
Hi, good afternoon. Could you, and all this is not a lot to your report and everything else, could you shed some light on the Hearts For Healthcare theme that they're, that they're having at the MD Park in Cold Lake?
At the MD Park in Cold Lake, I believe Esther from Planning Community Services actually has more information on that particular event.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Earlier last month, we were approached by Cold Lake Hearts For Healthcare to ask if we would be interested through either a community action grant or through the donations and sponsorship policy to support them in a initiative where they, I think it's called Sparkle in the Park.
There is Sparkle in the Park?
Sparkle in the Park, where they, and it's been consequently approved to allow them to use Cold Lake MD Park to do a Christmas lights display for the business community. They will be providing the stalls to the individual businesses who are willing to sponsor and participate in, in, I believe it's happening, obviously, in December around the same time as the Cold Lake Parade, Christmas Parade. So, on the MD side, we are going to be recognized as a major sponsor, and we will be providing mostly in-kind value, which is the clearing of the snow. We'll be turning on our power so that, obviously, the lights will work. And I believe we're also steaming out some of the washroom facilities as well. So, the idea is, is that it'll be a fundraiser for Hearts For Healthcare.
Do you know how many, like, how many businesses or, I guess, people are going to be participating in this? Like, have they figured it out? Is it going to be 40, like, 40 businesses or 40 participants? Is it going to be 60? Did it give you an idea of how many participants it might be? Because I'm getting asked the questions and, you know, and like a, you know, I guess a mini candy cane lane experience, and is it going to be a driving tour or is it going to be a walking tour? Sorry, I don't mean to.
No problem. Through the reef, what I can do is I'll pull the details from their application and see what, if we have that level of, of information. If we don't, we can easily reach out to them and get it out to council so everybody is in the know on what the program is.
Awesome, thank you.
There is a call-out to vendors right now through the Hearts For Healthcare Facebook page, so they're still, they're still.
They're just, just getting started.
Yeah, and we're going to be helping them boost it and all that kind of stuff, and yeah, perfect.
That's what we were just talking about, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Super.
Can I just ask a quick one, too? Like, if we had the amount of snow we had last year, are we going to get involved in helping out with snow removal if it's, like, otherwise you'll never get into that part?
Yeah.
They said that.
Did they?
Yeah, that's what she said, just a five minutes ago.
Why did I miss that?
That's okay.
Because Counselor Reeve, just Deputy Reeve just asked if it's a walking tour or a driving tour, and so we don't know.
Before that, she said that.
Oh, so we will.
I missed most of them, but that one I got.
Good, thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I didn't ask if anyone else that had any other question.
I did, but I'm okay now.
Oh, yeah, sure you did.
Don't be scared.
Did you?
No.
Okay, good one. You got me on that one, too.
It's always on.
So, we're at 9.4.2, correct?
Did we vote the motion?
I think we did the motion, didn't we? No, we didn't. All right, looking for a motion then. It said Big Bag Carried on my, yeah, you got it? Okay. All right, thank you, Counselor Cravieck, for making a motion that council accepts Marketing and Communications 2022 Third Quarter Report as information. Darcy, you'll have opportunity to speak, no?
I'm all right.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Josh, you up and running now? That's carried. On to 9.4.2.
Now, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. The government of Alberta has deemed November as Family Violence Prevention Month. This declaration is especially significant to the Dr. Margaret Savage Crisis Center as an emergency shelter for women and children fleeing domestic and intimate partner violence. The Dr. Margaret Savage Crisis Center has submitted a proclamation request to the MD of Bonneville to declare November 22nd as Family Violence Prevention Month within the municipality. The goal is that this increased awareness will help highlight the issues of domestic violence in our communities. Council approved a similar request from the Dr. Margaret Savage Crisis Center in 2021 and proclaimed November 2021 as Family Violence Prevention Month. Attached for council review is the request email and the draft proclamation. Our administrative recommendation is that council approves the proclamation of November 2022 as Family Violence Prevention Month within the Municipal District of Bonneville.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slupchik, for making that motion that, on behalf of council, that council approves proclamation of November 2022 as Family Violence Prevention Month with the Municipal District of Bonneville. Any discussion on this? I'll call for the vote.
You should have flipped it.
After the vote, probably. Can we bring that plug on the screen?
Oh, that's a long ways away.
I can read it from there. Okay. Okay, whereas Alberta has the third highest rate of self-reported intimate partner violence among Canadian provinces, and whereas approximately every six days a woman in Canada is killed by her intimate partner, and whereas the community benefits in creating awareness and resources on family violence, and whereas violence against women and children represent one of the most significant societal issues that endanger Canadians' health and well-being, whereas the effects of family violence may be carried on from generation to generation, and whereas there is, there are many people in the Municipal District of Bonneville who experience family violence, whereas the estimated total economic, economic cost of spousal violence in Canada is estimated at $7.4 billion, and whereas all community members in the Municipal District of Bonneville have a role to play in preventing family violence. Now, therefore, I, Barry Kelniski Reeve of the Municipal District of Bonneville, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2022 to be Family Violence Prevention Month. In the Municipal District of Bonneville, I call upon citizens to speak out against family violence, and I call upon you to make a difference by creating a culture of support for those affected by family violence, and I call upon you to encourage all community members to help make our municipal district violence free in 2022 and beyond. You can speak up for those who are silenced.
Good afternoon. At the October 12, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council, council gave direction for administration to bring an amended Committee of the Whole Terms of Reference to a future meeting to update the number of members needed to meet quorum from five to four. This change would align quorum requirements for the Committee of the Whole with the regular meetings of council meetings. Administration is prepared an amending, amending Terms of Reference attached as Appendix A for council's consideration, changing that requirement from five to four as directed. Our recommended action is that council adopts the MD Committee of the Whole Terms of Reference as amended.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, please?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to approve option one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cravieck, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council adopts the MD Committee of the Whole of Reference as amended. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I guess I think Committee of the Whole is a time where we can have more in-depth discussions about things and make group decisions, and if we do this, then we're only going to, we have the opportunity to have Committee of the Whole meeting with only 57% of council present, so I would recommend leaving it as, as is with five per quorum.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. On to 9.4.4. Thank you, on to nine point four point four.
Next is the Amending Master Rates Bylaw. Administration is prepared, this amending rates, master rates bylaw, to update schedule A, master rates and fees schedule for the, sorry, for council's review. The amending master rates bylaw proposes the following changes to the fee schedule. The FOIC request fees, it's just simply removing specific fees and referring to the regulations which already outline what a municipality can charge for information requests that come in. Canusu Ridge and parks and campgrounds, removing the fee schedules altogether, and this is to allow more responsive updates to the fees and charges as needed, which would be more conducive to the operational nature of these programs. Planning and development has proposed in addition to the deposit and reclamation fees pertaining to short-term road approaches and a proposed rate increase to the MD administrative fees pertaining to permit applications to bring the MD's fees more in line with other neighboring municipalities. The addition of the deposit and reclamation fees pertaining to short-term road approaches is just simply transferring that information from the policy to this bylaw. Due to time constraints for Canusu to start advertising early bird and season passes, administration is requesting all three readings from council at today's meeting. The committee of the whole reviewed this bylaw on October nineteenth and are recommending that council pass bylaw number eighteen thirteen as presented. Administration's recommended action is that the bylaw receive all three readings today.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Counselor Scarsen?
So when you say to be more responsive to, like, so it has all the camp fees and the baseball fees and all that, so like, so you can change mid-season kind of thing? Or like, what are you getting at there?
Through the Reeve, the idea actually came from the pre-budget workshop that we held with council about a month ago, I guess now, maybe a few weeks ago, where we talked about specifically around how certain, we received clarity from the legal standpoint on what rates we include and do not include in, enforced through bylaw, and from that, the discussion around Canisus rates, for example, seasons passes versus items on the menu to campground rates, that pretty much anything in the recreation realm do technically fall outside of the requirements of being established by bylaw. With that, we felt because of, especially with Canisu being the catalyst, that this would be a good opportunity to pull those out of the master rates bylaw so that on an annual basis, it'll still be reviewed. The only difference is, is that it would be made as a more of an administrative business decision than per se through council.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other, any other comments or questions? Yes, Counselor Kravjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So for the fire protection services, we're just going to be charging for the on-highway fires? That's what this says on page seven?
If that's what it says.
So we still won't be charging for on-highly residences, right?
There's no change to that yet. We're still working on the policies to come forward regarding fire, but this is, this almost exclusively just deals with the recreation and parks department.
Yeah, I recommend we don't, we don't start charging for fires on highly residences myself, but, okay, thank you.
Anyone like to, any other comments or someone likes to make the first motion?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the first motion. My comment is, I think it makes sense, you want to charge something like, I'll be, I'll be simple about this one, but you want to charge twenty bucks for something like a burger instead of eighteen ninety-five, then this kind of allows them to do it without having to go through a bylaw change every time you change a price of something.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll make the motion that we go to the first reading.
All right, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirteen being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to amend the master rates bylaw to be given first reading. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried. All right, just looking for a motion for second for eighteen thirteen.
I'll make a motion for a second reading.
All right, thank you, Counselor Slupchak, on behalf of council for making a motion that bylaw number eighteen thirteen be given second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Carried. Looking for someone to go into third?
I'll make the motion for third, please.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve, makes a motion that council proceeds a third and final reading for bylaw number eighteen thirteen. Call for the vote. And finally, the, yeah, that's carried, sorry. And finally, the third reading, please.
I'll make a motion that bylaw eighteen thirteen be given third reading.
All right, thank you, Counselor Slupchak, for making a motion that bylaw number eighteen thirteen be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to nine point four point five.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve. Today I'm here to talk about the, to give you some information about the Occupational Health and Safety Department here at the MD. As a member of the Partnerships and Injury Reduction Plan, we must develop and maintain a health and safety program that meets the standards set out in occupational health and safety legislation. In October of two thousand twenty-two, so earlier this month, we actually had a certified provincial auditor come and evaluate our program. It's not working. And so a core audit is what it was, and a certificate of recognition is a benchmark of our safety program. It means that our program has been evaluated against a set of standards that are in Alberta legislation. And presently, we're partnered with the Alberta Municipal Health and Safety Association. They're called our certifying partner, and they administer our core process with WCB. AMSA is funded by a levy of our WCB premiums, which we pay, and it's also done on a three-year cycle. Next. So this is just a copy of our certificate that we received, so it's good until October two thousand twenty-five as long as we maintain it internally. So like I said, it's on a three-year cycle, so every two years, we need to do an audit internally with our internal audit team, and then the next year, and then on the third year of the cycle, we have an external auditor come and look at the program. So with the core audit, we have ten elements to, to go through, and we received a score of eight hundred and sixty points out of a possible one thousand. The points are gathered through interviews, documentation, and observations throughout the MD facilities and sites. Some of our strong elements included inspections, and we were, we really focused on inspections this year since I've been here. We now inspect our buildings, we inspect our sites, we inspect just people doing tasks, and we also have really been working on inspecting our subcontractors and making sure that they're complying with occupational health and legislation while they're working for the MD. Other strong areas were our Joint Health and Safety Committee, which is a committee mandated that we have with people from the management side as well as the workers sitting on it, and our emergency response plans and our drills that we have facilitated throughout the MD. Some of the gaps that we will be looking at include our hazard assessments, preventative maintenance program, and the process of our incident investigations. Through the audit, we, we had thirty-nine staff interviewed, and the staff includes people from the worker level to supervisors to managers and senior leadership. We visited actually five sites where they come in and look, make sure we have our emergency response equipment in place, that we have emergency lighting and AEDs and first aid kits, fire extinguishers, and they also looked to see that we have implemented the corrective actions that we have determined in some of our incident investigations, that they're actually in place and functioning throughout the MD. And as well, during the audit, they sampled literally hundreds and hundreds of documents for looking that we're doing what we say that we're supposed to be doing. So the benefits of a core, it indicates that we have a comprehensive safety program and it's proven that it leads to reduction in injuries. It also gives us a financial incentive through WCB partnerships and injury reduction program. For example, in two thousand twenty-two, we pay, the industry rate was for us to pay a dollar thirty-seven for every one hundred dollars of employee earnings. We were able to reduce that to ninety-four cents, so a thirty-one percent reduction because of our good performance in the safety field. The other benefits of a core is that it gives us resources through our certifying partner, safety support, and training information. Now, understand that a core is not mandatory, but a safety program is, so that's one thing that people need to understand. Legislation does not say you need to have a core, but we have joined the core up because of the benefits we get financially. When I did your safety orientation back in October, we talked about our safety management system. So that's the program that the safety team administers here. It does align with our core and all of the elements that are set out, and it also indicates through the score of eighty-six percent that we have developed a robust safety system and that we are reducing injuries and incidents and keeping our workers safe in the company. Some of the initiatives for our safety management system is that we're moving towards electronic reporting for real-time support and analysis. As you can imagine, every day we have hundreds of pieces of paper out in the field, very difficult for me personally to track. They come in with coffee stains and wrinkles and dirt and rips, and sometimes they don't come in. So moving the team to do electronic reporting on their daily hazard assessments and vehicle inspections would allow real-time response, I'd be able to see who's doing what, and we can pull the data much easier. And the reason why we pull data is to improve our information, our training, our competencies, our educations, education, and then we can look at this data and develop targeted programs to improve things throughout the MD safety program. So the last little slide here, I was going to tell CAO Hogan that I was just going to put this up, and our safety program speaks for itself, but honestly, the, the, the audit is just a snapshot in time, so as soon as we have the audit, all those pieces of paper they've sampled, all those people they've talked to, we forget it and now we move forward, and any safety program is fluid and changes daily, and so now we're going to be making an action plan, looking at some gap analysis and developing programs so we can continue keeping the workers, the contractors, and the visitors of the MD safe in our environment.
Thank you, well done.
Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fideh?
So with all the protocols you guys have, which are fantastic, is this also brought down to the site managers at the, at the campgrounds that are, that are out there, that they do as well? Yeah?
Yeah, definitely. So they all received a safety orientation, and in fact, I personally visited probably seven of the campgrounds multiple times this summer to make sure, if they had questions, obviously, it's an, it's an educational component, but to ensure that they are following our safety protocols.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just looking for a motion, I guess? Yes, Deputy Reeve?
I'll make the motion that council accepts the occupational health and safety presentation as information.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideh, for making a motion on behalf of council that council accepts occupational health and safety presentation as information. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Nine point five?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Nine point five is regarding council invitation. The Royal Canadian Legion Branch number two eleven Cold Lake Remembrance Day service, the Cold Lake Branch two eleven of the Royal Canadian Legion is conducting a community service Remembrance Day at the Energy Centre on November eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, and invites council to attend. The timing of the event is to follow, we don't know exactly, but I would assume mid-morning, typically eleven o'clock is pretty common. Attached for council's information is the, is the letter from the Cold Lake Legion, the invitation. Our recommendation is that council approves attendance to the Royal Canadian Legion number two eleven, the Cold Lake Remembrance Day service on November eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, to be attended by Counselor Reeve or Deputy Reeve at council's discretion.
All right, thank you. I know I'll probably be in the city on that day, so is anybody like to, we're all, we're all there the day before, I guess, on the tenth, eh? Or most of us? Yes?
Yeah, if, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'll be here, but if I'm here, I'll, I'll be happy to attend that one.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideh. Does anyone want to make a motion to? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to send Deputy Reeve Fideh.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves attending the Royal Canadian Legion Branch number two eleven Cold Lake Remembrance Day service on November eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, to be attended by the Deputy Reeve Fideh. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
It's not on the agenda, but just got me thinking of it, is there, is the Bonneville Legion having a Remembrance Day ceremony that day as well?
Um, through, through the Reeve, I'm sure they do. We have not received a formal invitation for, for anyone from council to attend. I'm, I suspect we will, it just hasn't come yet, but we haven't received anything to date.
Okay, that was carried, that motion. Do you want to, would you like to attend it if it was here on the eleventh?
Yeah, I can, and I can wait a reason on behalf of the MD if, if we're, I'm sure it's going to happen, so.
Okay, we don't need a motion for that, or do we?
I would suggest, Mr. Reeve, that a motion, yes, and make it the identical motion to this one, just, just change Cold Lake to Bonneville and to.
So if they do phone, you can, you can tell them that Counselor Crick, so let's make another motion then, good point there, Counselor Crick.
I'll make a motion that Counselor Crick.
All right, thank you, Counselor Slupchak, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves attending the Royal Canadian Legion Branch, I don't know the number, what's the number here of the branch? Or we still got a, sorry, that came up too fast. The Royal Canadian Legion Bonneville Branch Remembrance Day service on November eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, to be attended by Counselor Crick. I apologize for that, guys. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, carried. Nine point six, nine point six point one?
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Good afternoon.
This is an RFD for the adding festoon outlets to streetlights in Cherry Grove, La Corian, Thirion. In early two thousand twenty-two, council tasked administration with purchasing decorative festoon lights, Christmas-themed, sixty thousand dollars in total, to replace the existing festoon lights that had, that had become a fire hazard. The streetlights in Ardmore and Fort Kent were already configured for attaching and energizing the festoon lights, but the streetlights in. energizing the festoon lights, but the streetlights in Cherry Grove, La Corian, Thirion were not. Administration contacted Atco to inquire about the configuring the streetlights in Cherry Grove, La Corian, Thirion, so that they could so that they too could be decorated with the new festoon lights. Atco responded with costs for configuring Cherry Grove alone with a separate cost with a separate cost for configuring La Corian, Thirion. This was done because Atco can commit to configuring the the streetlights in Cherry Grove during the MD's preferred timeline, but Atco could absolutely not commit to configuring La Cori and Thirion during the desired timeframe. In order to possibly reduce the total cost, administration requested an additional estimate estimated cost for configuring all three communities, even if there was no firm commitment from Atco for La Corian, Thirion. The cost estimates provided by Atco are as follows. Cherry Grove alone, ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. La Cori and Thirion together, nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. La Cori, sorry, Cherry Grove, La Cori, and Thirion together, nineteen thousand, four fifty-five. Configuring all the three locations together could save nine hundred and six dollars. However, there remains the possibility that La Corian, Thirion would not be configured by for the two thousand and twenty-two holiday season. The cost could be paid under the two thousand and twenty-two operating budget for contracted services, but that GL code does not have the required funds under the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Funds could be transferred from the two thousand and twenty-two budget for drainage, which has more than sufficient funds to complete this work. The total cost would be nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, seventy-four cents. And it's administration's recommended action, the council direct administration, to engage Atco to configure the streetlights in all three communities together to save nine hundred and six dollars and ninety-six cents in costs. Atco would configure Cherry Grove in the MD's desired timeframe and would make every effort to configure La Corian, Thirion during the same timeframe, but cannot guarantee it.
Okay, thank you. Comments or looking for a motion?
I'm just curious, why like why take it out of drainage? Is that just the biggest account available, or what?
Through the Reeve to Counselors Carson, I do have, Infrastructure Services has a has a adequate amount of funds left in that reserve or in that, sorry, not reserve, in that budgeted item, and we can just transfer some funds out of there for it. Later in the year, we're not going to be doing the some drainage projects from that from that GL, so we can take that money out of there.
Yeah, I'll just make make motion option number one, that we proceed with the three projects as presented.
Right. Thank you, Councilor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to proceed with the configuring of streetlights in Cherry Grove, La Cori, and Thirion with festoon outlets together as one project as presented, and furthermore approves the transfer of funds from the two thousand and twenty-two drainage budget to the two thousand and twenty-two contracted service budget for this project. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Councilor Crick?
I just have a question. What what is the annual cost, or do you have an idea what the annual cost of us putting these Christmas lights up would be?
Through the Reeve to Councilor Crick and and all of council, I don't have that number in front of me, so I could definitely get that get that number for you and pass it on through the CIO.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to ten. Ten point one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So ten and all the way ten point one through ten thirteen, correspondence and the council action report. I'm not gonna go through each piece of correspondence of of I would highlight the the report from the Minister of Health regarding some health engagement tour updates. The Reeve and I did attend one several months ago in Cold Lake. I haven't seen much come out of those engagements yet, but there is a there is a bit of a health engagement tour update from Minister Copping. He has remained Minister of Health, even with the change in leadership at at the province. So recommended action is that the council accepts that for information.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Deputy Reeve Fideev?
Just a quick clarification on the Grand Center Alliance Club request for standing as anonymous. Did they did they apply for an action grant then, or was that just previous funding that we had in the past? I'm just looking.
Yes, go ahead.
So it's kind of sad that they they somebody broke into their facility and stole some of the stuff that they had in the past, so I'm just kind of looking at seeing if they did that or not.
Mrs. Crivieak, I'll add her hand up.
Through the Reeves, so the Grand Centers Alliance Club, we did take the letter and reviewed it through the donations and sponsorship policy, and they were approved for a thousand-dollar donation to contribute to to this specific initiative.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Al on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm just looking for a motion then. Yes, Deputy Reeve Fideev?
Sure, I'll make the motion to accept all this as information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideev, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through thirteen. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, carried. All right, we have reports from members of council. Who would like to start? All right.
Well, it'll be short. So Munichor, we had a Munichor Zoom meeting October seventeenth. Little bit of discussion about the trail ride that Munichor had done from St. Paul to Heinsberg. Interesting trail ride. I made comments about the dust on the trail, because it was really, the trail's great great to ride on, but if you're riding with a group of people, you're sucking in dust. So there was some discussion about MG thirty and maybe trying to look at something to maybe de-dust some of that trail.
Can I have a quick, can I ask a question? Was that for like quads and stuff, or was that for horses, or what?
Well, that was that was quad, that that was quads that we did that one.
Okay.
But they do have, like, there's a wagon ride that goes through every year through that area, and it's pretty amazing, like, they get hundreds of riders and wagons and people, but. So anyway, trail ride, they talked about trail maintenance. I think there's like sixteen or eighteen trestles throughout the the trail that Munichor has to maintain, so they've got a project, probably won't start until next year, to replace some of the timbers at the edges of these at these trestles, because they're kind of getting worn out. Little bit of discussion about the interspatial or outer spatial app, and it's an app for your cell phone that has a list of all the trails and skidoo trails and quad and horse trails or whatever along Munichor. And so that's, Munichor's been working with Riverland Trails, Riverland Rec Trail Society to come up with that app, and it's it's been released. They're still doing a little bit of work on it, but it's actually quite a nice app. I think they tend intend to present to our council probably next year on that app, so that we can see if we find it useful, because I think it would be a great sort of advertising feature to to be used within the MD, to direct people to different sites and attractions that we've got. And there was a bit of discussion about Alberta Snowmobile Association and kind of pushing the government to get funding from registrations from quads and SUVs and that sort of thing. So as you you pay your registration, most other provinces, some a little bit of that goes toward trails. Alberta doesn't, and so they're kind of trying to push our government to help fund some of these trails through the collection of of that, some of that revenue. And that's, oh, yeah, I guess the Riverlands Rec Trail Society is at that meeting that same night. Just a little bit of discussion, the Lindbergh salt plant is closing, so I'm not sure if you already knew that, but they're just shutting that one down, because it's an older facility that's gonna cost them too much to maintain, and they've got other salt facilities throughout the country, so they're gonna shut the Lindbergh one down. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Crivieak.
Yeah, thank you. We all attended the public hearing workshop. I attended the first annual Victor and Get Sportsman Dinner, well-attended, fundraising for five different charities. BRFA, you have the minutes before you. If you want some stats, the average transfers were down sixteen percent from two thousand and twenty-one. Average emerge calls up slightly. The average calls per day, eight point seven seven, down from ten point two. And the accreditation report is ongoing for EMS. Also attended the Glendon Fireman's Ball. Four hundred and fifty people attended that. It's a great fundraiser, and you probably all know this, Reeve Kalinsky did an awesome job of entertaining the crowd there, so it was well well done. I attended a chief officers' meeting. Can't keep going here. We're discussing a regional training plan, and encouraged the staff to take the Resilient Minds Workshop, dealing with mental health. Glendon Paroghi Bonspiel is on March the fourth, and normally we send two teams, one from council and one from the staff, so that's March the fourth, if you can remember those dates. Or that date. Also, had an act service board meeting. There's the provincial ASB in Grand Prairie, January seventeenth to nineteenth. Farm Family Award is given to the Waculch Brothers of Iron River, and this will be awarded at the Farm Fair International November eleventh, and I will be attending with Councilor Crick for that one. Sixteen canola fields were inspected, no club root, no rats as well in the MD. November twenty-third, in the Ashmont Agriplex, from ten to four thirty, there's a session on innovation in technology and research. It's ten dollars to register, and you can call, I think it's Mr. Yance on that, I believe. December sixteenth, Flat Lake Hall, there's a session called Growing Profit From The Ground Up, from ten to four thirty, forty dollars per person. November seventeenth, there's a supper in Ashmont, and then there's a session called When Stress Is More Than A Season. And November eighteenth, there's a session in Ashmont, supper at six o'clock for the Young Farmer Social. So Reeve Kalinsky, you're welcome to attend that one as well.
It said young.
Yeah, so that's why I said, so that's all for me. Thank you.
All right.
One thing I attended was a Zoom meeting, and Counselor Swigger pretty well covered all that on the River Island Trail Society. And also, we attended Cold Lake Chamber Commerce last week. That was a very interesting event. And Victor and Get Sportsman's Supper, which was very entertaining, and lots of donations received, lots of people, and as well as the CRL banquet on Saturday, which was a huge turnout, and I believe I'm for sure it was a huge success. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, we had a FCSS meeting, which the other day, again, one of the hugely typical meeting, but a lot of discussion on the homeless discussion, and also with the CEO Colak, they got some 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 big changes and some big decisions to make. Chamber of Commerce in Cold Lake was was good, also with the Bonneville one. The Bonneville one was was great. We had some members from the MD, they got some awards, and let me just quickly get that. So award award recipients were Building Community Resilience Award was the Dragonfly, Exornator Leadership Awards was Trendy Creations Beauty Bar, exemplary customer service award was Bushels and Bushels of Fund Pet Care Services, and Emergency Entrepreneur Award was Three-Fifty Farms. Outstanding non-for-profit, non-for-profit award was BRFA, and outstanding large business award was Jackknife Oilfield Services, and outstanding small business was Lake Land Arctic Spas. And one thing that you kind of heard throughout, you know, through everything, was still the the recovery of the the COVID and and, you know, business getting, you know, back to usual, as we also heard from from Les today as well, that we're slowly getting there, but it's still a lot of us, it's a lot of challenges ahead of us, and yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you.
See, we had a Bonneville Regional Water Service Commission meeting, and we reduced the rate for the we're charging for water from a dollar ten a cubic meter to one dollar per cubic meter, just based on the we managed to do that still affordable. And that's retroactive to the beginning of this year, which will be good for people. I was also at the Bonneville District Business of the Year Awards, and that was it was a good event, the awards meant a lot to the people that were getting them. There was a comment made that we didn't have time to read the names of all the nominees, but the presenters of the awards went ahead and read the names of the nominees anyways, which was good to see them honoring them that way. Egg Service Board Meeting, and the one thing about that was the Coyote and Wolf Bounty will remain in place at least till the end of the year, and if we run out of budget funds for that, then we can look at that come January, but for now, it's still in place. Had a BRFA meeting, I think Councilor Crivieak covered that quite well. There's also a meeting out at La Cori Willow Prairie Hall in regards to the presentation that Toma Consulting did here. There's about five hundred people showed up to that. I think a lot of people are quite concerned about what's could be happening in the area here, and don't want to see that land taken away from the MD. Not really a council thing, but I I did on the weekend, I bumped into Minister of Transportation, Devin Dretchen. So I mentioned to him that about Highway Twenty-Eight needing needing a lot of work. And then had the Glendon Fireman's Ball. That was a very well-done event. The Glendon Fire Department does a lot of work, put on a really good event, showed a lot of appreciation to their members. And even at one point, the one guy was presenting there, he kind of broke down in tears just bringing up a couple of the really hard, they had one really hard day back in May, where they had stars come in and pick up a patient, and then they had another one that was involving a child later on the same day. So they they do a lot of really great work out there, helping people. Monday evening this week, I had a lake trout working group meeting in Cold Lake, and that's discussing the lake trout fishing regulations. So there was a bit of discussion there about what type of lake fishery we want to see. There's pretty much two major, two main themes that came out of that. One was some people want to see it for more for trophy fish, and others want to just see it for harvesting fish. So again, if anyone has any feedback on that, whether it's staff or council or anybody watching on YouTube, feel free to contact me, let me know, so I can take your ideas forward. I also took some smoked pike, which I shared with everybody to try there, although it was from Saskatchewan, because you're actually about to keep the fish in Saskatchewan, and I announced that to the group. And then last night, had a open house at the Hive in town here, so that's it for me.
Thank you.
Well, I definitely wasn't that busy, but I'll tell you that the library did hire a new manager, so they start, I think, next month here, and then also the bilingual committee that we sit on there, they hired a new executive director as well, so we can start. I think we have a meeting with them coming up as well, so that's about it.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll touch first on the the meeting we had in La Cori with the, you know, we were invited to that meeting, that was Mr. Sylvester put that meeting on, so I thought it was a very well-attended meeting, like, it was crazy to see how many people were concerned about the area. But I, on behalf of me as a Reeve, I think it kind of got political at the end of the meeting, and I didn't I didn't know that was gonna happen, so I had a lot of comments from peoples about the political way the meeting ended, and I myself and Mr. Hanson did not know that was gonna happen like that. But besides, I think I had a lot of good points anyway, but besides that, I thought it was a very good turnout, and the people got some information, and we're gonna still dig into for more information. So I thought it was it was one of the best events I ever. So I thought it was, um, it was one of the best events I ever been to. There were so many people there lined up all the way to the highway almost, so it's pretty amazing. Um, just throw the glasses on here, I guess I'll talk about Glendon as well. I was very impressed, um, with, uh, the chief from Glendon when he spoke, uh, he spoke very well, uh, he, he congratulated his community and his staff. I was very impressed the way he spoke and then our, uh, our, our chief couldn't attend because he was sick, uh, from, from the district, but, uh, our deputy chief was there and she did a, again, amazing job, uh, she didn't forget anyone and she did a really good job of speaking there, so I was very impressed with that and, uh, I think the whole event for the little, uh, village of Glendon was quite a success, uh, to me it was anyway. I'm sure Councilor Crick and Councilor Criviat would agree with me on that, I was very, and I too, I mentioned we had, um, a chief, uh, a chief officers' meeting here the other night, uh, I believe, uh, Councilor Criviat and myself, and I did mention that, um, one of the guys came up there and he, uh, one of the firefighters got up there and, uh, yeah, he had a hard time finishing, um, because, uh, they seen some stuff that nobody should see. And then they talked about kids again, seeing stuff with kids and, uh, he was very appreciative of, um, a couple, uh, other firefighters that kind of came and hang with him or whatever, just to talk or whatever, whatever you need to do to kind of get back grounded because it's, um, it's a lot. And, uh, another thing we discussed is, uh, you know, for the people out there in the MD and Bonneville and, uh, Cold Lake and surrounding areas, I kind of had a request from the, you know, the men and women that travel and the ambulances and, and the fire trucks and even our RCMP and our constables. Like, when these guys have their flashing lights on, they, they don't have them on for, just for the fun of it. Um, you know, they're going, they're going to some serious thing, it could be your loved one that they're going to see, it could be your loved one in the ambulance, could be your, your neighbor's house burning down. Just have some respect for the lights, um, I, I'm, I'm sure most of the people do, but the odd time, you know, they had some, they told some stories that, you know, they're trying to race to pass somebody to get to a fire, well, you shouldn't have to do that in this day and age. You see some lights, you should be pulling over and letting these people go by. It's, uh, lots of times it's a matter of life and death, so just, um, you know, to some, uh, you know, some of us elders, uh, may even talk to some of the younger, younger ones in the area and just say, hey, when you see lights, what do you do? And just give them some, uh, give them some knowledge of what, what you need to do and, and when these guys pull it on the highway, just slow down because at thirty kilometers an hour, you won't kill anybody, but at eighty or up, you're, you have a possibility of killing someone on the highway just going by too fast, so just a little FYI there, so, um, I'll just look at my thing here quick. Hey, um, Esther, I, I mentioned to something, could you just talk on that, what I talked with you, so, a, a fellow from the federal government on behalf of, uh, a minister just yak at me yesterday, uh, and I just brought it forward to Esther and I'll let her, I think it's a good thing for our area and I'll just let Esther kind of comment and I, I'm sorry Esther, I'm kind of putting you on the gun there.
No problem, I'll just pull up the email.
Sure.
Al, she's looking at that. I, well, I wonder if, just in regards to your comments, if we could get, uh, in the oral reviewed, maybe just a little write-up about the, the lights.
Yeah.
Reminding people to pull over properly.
That'd be a great idea, just a little, you know, most people know, but just a little friendly reminder.
If someone's pulled over, kind of thing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sorry Esther, go ahead.
Um, okay, uh, so the Business View Magazine has approached, um, actually had a chance to discuss their idea with, uh, Reeve Kalinsky. They are doing profiles in conjunction, it looks like, with Infrastructure Canada on select communities across Canada. It is a, uh, magazine, it's a national magazine, uh, from what we've seen on their website. Um, so with Infrastructure Canada, their profiles are of five communities in each of the provinces. So they are going out and, um, approaching over twenty-five or thirty communities in Alberta and we happen to be one that they reached out, uh, to the Reeve to see if, uh, we would be interested in submitting, uh, profile summary, which, um, covers off highlights of our community, including community developments or enhancement. And this is all around pivoting around COVID and how we got through COVID and where we're moving forward now. Community development, uh, infrastructure, roads, housing projects, expansions, developments, um, school, police, hospital developments, any private developments in the area. If we wanted to focus in on our economic development, new focus, uh, potentially our Bonneville Airport expansion, the expansion out at, uh, Kinesu as well as what we do with, just within the community during COVID, just to, uh, move our community forward in a proactive way through the situation across Canada, across the world.
Thank you.
So it, um, looks like a very good potential opportunity. I did already speak with our marketing department and communications with it and will be deliberating and reviewing it more closely.
Thank you, man, that was well done for putting you on the spot like that.
Uh, can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
I was in B.C. recently and I was just, I was really kind of surprised but happy to hear that they're actually advertising the Pathways Project in B.C. for Alberta and for this area. So I just thought it was interesting that it's got that kind of.
Pull already?
Yeah.
Great. Um, and the rest of, you guys pretty well touched on everything else that, um, I attended and, uh, yeah, that's, that's about it. Thank you. Yeah, sorry, did I miss something?
Uh, Mr. Reeve, did you, uh, want to mention the economic development, uh, meeting we had in?
Yes, yeah, sure, yeah, I had that marked down here and I apologize. Yeah, Al and myself, Mr. Hogan and myself, we, uh, did an economic, uh, thing with, uh, it was a ministerial meeting in the, in the, in the city. And, uh, it's kind of out of my element there, I wasn't really, uh, but the biggest thing that I got out of the meeting is I met one of the, a lady from, uh, to do with, uh, natural gas and, uh, we're gonna, I don't know if anybody contacted you yet, Al or not, um, but that was one of the big highlights, uh, because we have problems with gas in our area, so it was just kind of a, a lady that was in charge of Alberta for natural gas and stuff and, and, uh, I think Al, uh, they have reached out to each other already or, or I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'll let him finish on that.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So, uh, um, I bumped into a lady named Stephanie Clark, Ms. Clark used to be in municipal affairs and unknown to me had moved over to become, uh, uh, the Assistant Deputy Minister of, uh, Natural Gas and Energy. So, uh, Reeve Kalinsky, I talked to her briefly, I spoke to her at length afterwards, um, and have since, uh, received, uh, uh, communication with, uh, her executive director, fellow by the name of Mr. Will Clark. We had a long discussion about the natural gas issues, uh, in our MD. Um, he is setting up a meeting for me with him and one of the ADMs from Ag. One of the issues that we run into is the, the co-ops are managed through the Department of Agriculture, they're not dealt with through, uh, through the Department of Energy. So, um, I'm having a meeting next week, I'm not sure what date it is yet, but Mr. Clark is, uh, meeting with himself and with one of the ADMs from, uh, from the Ag Ministry to start beginning working on, uh, some of the, the co-op issues that we have here. Unfortunately, um, uh, he indicated to me that these are tough issues with co-ops and, uh, um, we may have to visit alternates, uh, alternative strategies to receive some, uh, um, satisfaction in terms of the, the gas provision in, in some of those areas, particularly, uh, you know, in Division Six and Ward Six and up in that area, but, uh, but I will report back to council my conversations with the ADM and see where we go from there.
In the future, thank you. Yeah, thanks for reminding me about that, Al. Appreciate that. All right, um, yes, well, everybody, that was well done, great meeting so far, uh, thank you to Al and his staff, uh, everyone did such a great job today. I guess I need a motion to go into closed session now. Yeah, Councilor Crick, uh, makes a motion to go into closed session. I'll just call for the vote. Carrie.